Yeah.
Was there someone in it? Somebody had the flat tire and she's waiting for AAA. I think she's.
Thank you.
Maybe it's one of those driverless Waymos like they have out in Phoenix. Except those are Jaguars or something.
Yes, they are. So everyone tries to pass them. So it's even less safe than a normal driverless car.
Okay, folks, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And the first the first order of business on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everybody. I would entertain a motion to approve the August 5th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula, do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And Ilda's on online, so she raised her hand. Hi, Ilda. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session on August 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. Motion approved and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from. Oh, I should have said those two previous meetings were special meetings. Now on to the regular meeting on August 14th. Who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Katina?
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. She beat you, Ilda, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. Then the next thing is a public comment. Is there anybody signed up to speak during public comment? I don't see anybody online raising their hand and there's nobody signed up here. I don't see anybody raising their hands, so we're going to move on. Board chairs report, my only thing I wanted to remind board members is that when we get discussion to discussion item tonight, we're going to talk about possible items to cover in our board retreat coming up in October. And so if you haven't thought about it before today and you want to think about it while we're having the meeting today, before we get to that discussion item, I'm looking for suggestions so that Tracy and I can start to put together the agenda for the for the two days or part of one day and the other day that we're together. It's very helpful to hear from board members if there are items that you'd like to dig more into during the retreat. I also would like to just share that we're down a few board members tonight, but we do have a quorum and people have matters that came up that they did not anticipate before today, so they couldn't join us. And we have one board member, Ilda, joining us online. Thank you. That's it. It's on to you, Tracy.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. First up, first item on my report is just to remind everyone that on Monday, we had the district's convocation. We have a Bring Your A Game theme. We had an awful lot of fun. It was a stadium-like event. There's a picture of the staff out on the football field after the event, but I do want to thank the board members who were able to join us, Alicia and Katina and Lynn and Paula. Thank you very much for being there amidst the wave and the excitement from the staff. So I think it was, I've received a lot of positive feedback that it was a great way to kick off our school year. So I appreciate you being there. Also, another sort of positive point I'd just like to share with the board is today we had our professional development day and it was really exciting to be able to share with the board, I'm looking right at Neil, of the 16 indicators that we've reviewed from the accountability index. We, the district has made growth on 14 of them, which is a really high percentage and we're very happy we got to share that information with our certified staff today. The board will get more information about that. These are, it's preliminary data, but we will share, but it was nice to be able to deliver a positive message on convocation and then connect it to a positive message data-wise, so. That's the first piece.
That's exciting. Can't wait to see where we've made the progress.
Absolutely. Next up is the board has a list of our open house dates. You're all invited, welcome to come to join us, to be a part of it. And I, so they're all listed there for you. I also want to remind the board members that on September 26th, we're doing the official ribbon cutting ceremony for the Wyndham Early Childhood Center. So we're excited about that. We will be sending out, I think this week, the invitations to town and town officials and obviously Susan Johnson, Senator May Flexer and our supporters to join us. Any questions?
No, but I would like to make a comment if I can. I went, yeah, last night to Wyndham Middle School, grade seven and eight open house. It was super well-attended by parents and students. It was in Spanish and English. It was very well organized. The child that I accompanied, my great niece, was so stressed out and immediately she was calm and happy to meet her teacher, her teachers. And they did talk about the improvements, including attendance that they have made at the, at the middle school. So I was also a proud person as I am their, what do we call them, ambassador. Thank you.
Yes, we are very proud of them for sure. Thanks, Katina.
Thank you. I guess we can keep moving on and I do encourage board members to attend any of these if they can.
Next up on our agenda is the vote that the board gets to consider tonight. I am recommending that the Board of Education appoint Mr. Albie Harris to the role of Executive Director of Operations and Strategic Initiatives. The board had an opportunity to speak with Albie before this meeting. This particular role was designed to restructure central office so that Neil and myself, superintendent and assistant superintendent, can spend more time dealing with some of our instructional pieces, our initiatives. In this particular role, Albie will be supervising the directors of food services, IT facilities, before and after-school programming, summer school and our school construction projects, as well as a variety of operational initiatives. Albie has been an administrator in Wyndham Public Schools for the past 14 years, been an educator for 25. In the district, he's held the roles of high school principal, middle school administrator, executive director for administration and operations, and most recently, currently, he's our director of secondary education. He holds an O-93 certification from UConn, which is the superintendent's certificate. He holds an O-92 certificate as well. Throughout his tenure at the Wyndham Public Schools, he has been relied on as a utility player. I regularly tell him that. He's always being sent off to do something. He has supported curriculum, instruction, school improvement initiatives, grant writing, transportation, safety and security, and school renovation initiatives. His support at Wyndham High School during this, during our renovation process has really been important in allowing our high school team to continue to do the day-to-day operations. In fact, some of his suggestions for phasing the project have actually helped us to finish the project sooner than we thought, which is wonderful. Albie always has a smile on his face, which is something that I appreciate because sometimes the job is hard and it's nice to see a smile and wants to celebrate our students, our schools and departments. So I appreciate his positivity, his positivity and his contributions to the district. During his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and he has a new Rottweiler puppy, which we get to see pictures of. Her name is Mocha and she's adorable. So tonight I'd like the board to consider appointing Albie as our Executive Director of Operations and Strategic Initiatives.
Do, do board members have any questions? I know that Albie will be up, will be up for action. The item, the item dealing with this will be up for an action item, but now would be a time to ask any questions if you had them. I don't think he's a stranger to any of us. And when it comes time to take action, maybe we'll ask you to come up to the mic and say a few words if that is okay with you. Wonderful, because not everybody watching knows you, so. Thank you. The family and community expo.
Yeah, so I was actually away last weekend and wasn't able to attend, but I'm told it was quite a success. We have to give, I know and some of our board members were there, thank you again for, for being a part of that. I have to acknowledge my, the district's family liaisons and the before and after-school coordinator for their behind-the-scenes work to coordinate the event. I know it's usually heavily attended and I'm told that it was no different. The, the event allows families to come enjoy music and vendors. We give away free backpacks and free haircuts. So thank you for those who were able to attend and thank you to our staff members who pulled that off this past weekend.
It was fabulous.
It was a beautiful day to have it too. Probably one of the best weather days we've had in a long time for that, that event. Yep. Thanks to all the work that went into it.
The, the next item on my report is actually something I already mentioned, at least in, in part, and that is that we had two professional development days. Well, one day is a day set aside for our teachers to set up their classrooms and then an opportunity for the both certified and non-certified staff to be a part of professional development all day today. So this just gives you some information about the specifics of that particular training. I know our teachers and support staff are looking forward to welcoming the kids back to school tomorrow, so.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you to the staff. I know a lot of work goes into those professional development days. It's not like we're hiring a consultant to come in from out of town and just do a workshop, so.
That's why Beth looks so tired today. She was one of our presenters, our facilitators. Next on my report is just an enrollment update for the district. Board members can see pre-K at 12 are, are anticipated enrollment and you can see that the numbers in pre-K and kindergarten are reduced as a result of the legislation. I don't know if there's any questions, but that's where we are.
Thank you for that chart. So we're like a little over 3,000 students at this point. We're like, like a couple hundred or 150 less than last year.
Correct. Yeah, that is correct. Next up is just to let you know that we worked with our new staff during the week of August 19 through the 23rd. We have a multifaceted team from the HR side, as well as the instructional side, to make sure that our new, our new hires are prepared and ready to go for the start of the school year. So that's just information about some of the things that they were working on and we appreciate all their efforts. Next is, you're provided with a link to a press release from Senator May Flexer and State Representative Susan Johnson. They came to the Natchog School Library on August 15th and did a press conference about the grant funds that they provided the district to help support our before and after-school programs. And we are incredibly appreciative of that money to help that program continue. It is definitely a program the community would love to see us expand, but it costs us money to do that, so we're always appreciative of any additional funds that come our way. For example, one of the things we shared at that press conference is that there are 80 families already on a waiting list who, if we could find the staff and the money, there's 80 people who would want to take advantage of the program. So it's definitely something heavily sought after. And last but not least, on my report is an update for the board related to the cell phones. The governor and the commissioner of education formally urged school districts to implement policies on the use of personal technology, cell phones. It could also include your Apple Watches and a variety of other things that the students have access to. We actually already have a policy in place that I have updated the board about, but what we'll do now, given the new recommendations that the Department of Education has provided, is we'll go back and we'll take a look at how our policy compares to what the state is recommending and figure out through the policy committee if changes need to be made. As the board was notified a couple of months ago, I believe, the, the, the model that we use at the middle school to significantly reduce, basically eliminate the use of cell phones worked so well in the middle school, it's being moved over to the high school and our elementary schools have fewer issues, but they are also upholding the policy so that we're all on the same page. Obviously, the goal of reducing the use of cell phones is to have a, a learning environment that is where students are not distracted and not negatively contributing to things that sometimes happen when they're texting one another, taking pictures of things they shouldn't, things like that. So we are working on that in earnest and we'll keep the board updated on that through the, through the policy committee. I don't know if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Tracy on anything that she just presented to us? Or reported to us? No? Great. A lot going on. Thank you. And I've been getting a lot of people asking about the cellphone policy, so it was nice to be able to say where we've been trying. We, we did work in the middle school and we're bringing it up to the high school.
I was just going to add that it seemed like part of the culture last night, like the kids were like, uh huh, we know. Like, you know, it was institutionalized already at the middle school, so the kids or the parents were not asking questions or protesting about it.
Yeah, that is actually true about a lot of things, as you know, being a social worker. Once you establish what the expectations are and you're consistent with them, the students understand that's what I'm expected to do. So it has happened at the middle school and it will soon happen at the high school. The one last thing that I wanted to mention is all the board members have a summary of the latest legislation in front of you. I know you had asked for it, so we gave you a copy of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw that. Thank you, Holly, for making the copies. I'm sure that you're the one that actually did that, but I had requested that at the last meeting and I think it's really helpful for board members to actually have it in writing before them, the legislative changes, because people hear about things and they make assumptions that they know exactly what happened at the legislature. This, this will be helpful to us. Thanks. Okay, now we're on to committee reports and first committee is finance and audit. We didn't meet.
We didn't meet, no.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the acknowledgement. No, we didn't meet at this point.
We haven't met since the special meeting that we had, yeah.
Getting, getting some final information from our advisors of the state and town, so we haven't met yet, no.
The next meeting of the finance and audit committee will be, do you know the date, Mark? September 11th. Okay. 9/11. Okay. Curriculum. Mary?
I, we met, I think it was last week. This, the last two weeks have gone by very fast. And we discussed the Dos Rios and Compañeros programs. I'm sorry, but I forgot the name of the middle school. Compañeros Unidos, okay. I don't think I wrote that down. And it was an overview, kind of a review of what was presented to the board a couple of years ago, but just looking at the expansions in all the elementary schools and in the middle school. Let's see what I, these are very raw notes here. That there are, let me see. The fact that the Compañeros and Dos Rios does join into, it converges into one program in the middle school. And is there a high school? Okay, not yet. Which means there's no lottery for the middle school, I guess. And there are also, when there are, when there is a need, the new arrivals is in place at the middle school, but at the moment I don't think they have that program. Let me see. As I said, I did not organize these very well. This five-course subject areas are all covered in both languages. The difference between the Dos Rios and Compañeros is that in Dos Rios there is not the need for the 50% English speakers, 50% Spanish speakers. In fact, it's mainly Spanish speakers or students who have access to Spanish at home. And we went over those different subjects that they do in the middle school. For example, they alternate the math classes. They get intervention for English ELA and for Spanish language arts. And they get support if they're in English as a second language and Spanish as a second language. And there's a math interventionist. This is, Beth, is that correct, at the middle school? Okay, so, okay. And we also heard about the evaluations of the program, so we would like to know about when the next time that happens. And I apologize for taking such raw notes here.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions or comments? You know, I always, it's, it's always good to have board members in the community updated on what's happening with the, our English language learning and two-way bilingual program in the town because it's unique. And so I look forward to us continuing to learn more about what's going on with those programs and letting the public know more.
And, Will, I know this will come up when we're discussing the board retreat, but what Mary mentioned about the needs assessment was just provided to the district a very short time ago. We haven't actually officially processed it through, but I think that might be a great topic for the board retreat.
So noted. Yeah. Anything else? For Mary? Thank you, Mary. School planning and design, while Brendan isn't here tonight, I was at that meeting. It was a very short meeting. Mark, you were there too.
Yes, we, I think we just basically recapped getting the schools ready for the opening and Sly gave us an update on what they had done.
Right. So basically, for the people who don't know, Sly's in charge of facilities. He ran through basically almost school by school what the different checklist was of things that we had attempted to get done over the summer and other regular maintenance things. So what, sort of what shape we were in going into the new school year. Correct. Right. That's about it.
Yeah, he, he updated us, I guess the heating situation at the Wyndham Middle, at the Wyndham Center School is taken care of in the gym and there'll be a new awning put in place at North Wyndham to help the kids get in and out from the bus because of the rain. And that's, I can't remember any other major updates.
I think that was the gist of it. It was a very short meeting, like only like 15, 20 minutes long, so. I mean, by the time we ticked through what was happening over the summer, which was, you know, a fair amount of things, that was the meeting. And personnel, Paula?
Personnel just met this Monday and as you can imagine, HR was pretty busy with the opening of school between the expo, which they also attended, new hire orientation, which lasted two days, which was pretty impressive if you get a chance to see the agenda. I mean, even making sure that the insurance companies were there to explain benefits, mandatory in-services were done. It was pretty extensive. And I believe it included a bus ride around town, so folks that weren't local could get an idea of, of what Wyndham has to offer. They also were wrapping up the intern program that we have in combination with EastCon and those students will be receiving their letters of recommendation as they move on and certainly preparing for the next phase of interns. Lots of professional development that is ongoing. The new company that we're using for our substitutes actually made visits to all the schools, met with the school administration so that they could get an idea of kind of a profile of what their needs are apt to be. So hopefully we'll be prepared for that need. There were seven resignations during the month of July. Only three, I'd like to say only three, but we don't like to see any that were certified teachers. There were others that are district-wide folks. Negotiations continue. Hopefully we'll be able to wrap up secretaries before too long and we're just getting started with teacher negotiations. And Mark, you had a question about the visiting teachers. So we got a little bit of information there. We have 23 visiting international teachers for this coming year. Two are from Chile, five are from Colombia, 16 are from Spain. Five will be in their fourth year, two in their third year, eight will be in their second year and eight will be in their first year. And from our discussion Monday night, it sounds like many of them are already very much engaged in our community activities, having attended the expo as well. So it was a very busy department, but I think, I think I got it all in.
Thank you very much and kudos to Grace for getting things so that we can open the year with staff in place, so.
Oh, also convocation.
Right.
Input there.
Any comments, questions, Mary?
How many vacancies are still?
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, I have that here. We have it, forgot to get the glasses back on, sorry. We can get that to you in terms of, so that you can see all of the positions. Let's see. Sure I have an exact number.
Grace, you want to come up?
Grace, do you have that off the top of your head?
It's literally changing minute by minute, but we'll let.
Yeah, and I think that's why we didn't put a number on it at the meeting, but Mary, I can.
It's just coming to the mic right now, Paula.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Grace Martinez, Director of HR. Mrs. Glucci, as we had mentioned in the personnel committee meeting, it's ongoing where we're constantly having resignations and oh, well, actually not as much resignations, but we're hiring and going through the onboarding process. So, you know, we might, for instance, have, and I'm not, you know, please don't quote me, I'm just using a number out there. We could say like we have 10 vacancies, but five of them might be through the, going through the pipeline of the on. We could say like we have 10 vacancies, but five of them might be through the, going through the pipeline of the onboarding process. So, you know, tomorrow we'd be more than happy to give you what tomorrow's numbers are because again, it's just constantly changing.
And I just want to add that we list vacancies, even if we have long-term subs in the position, those positions stay open because we want to find certified folks to be in those positions. So it could see, it could be listed as a vacancy, but there is indeed a body in the position.
Mary has a follow-up question.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, because tomorrow is the first day of school. So, you know, I just wanted to know, are there still vacancies, especially in classrooms, teachers?
There'll be a body in every single classroom. So it could be a long-term sub that's in the classroom, it could be just a substitute for the day, or a teacher.
But you'll get us the numbers. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on personnel, we're going to move on to discussion items. And at the last meeting, we received information, having gone through one committee and then Dr. Youngberg meeting with the Wyndham Prevention Coalition staff, she presented us with more information. And I don't know, what's up here?
I have, Mary and Emily are from the Wyndham Prevention Coalition are online. Should there be any specific questions?
Right, right, I see them. But I didn't know whether you wanted to tee it up at all again, since we touched on it last month.
Sure, so I believe that we have thoroughly vetted the survey and addressed the concerns that were presented. As you know, they came and presented to the board, they got feedback from the board, they went back and adjusted the survey based on the feedback. Then they presented the adjusted survey to the board. Then I met, they presented it through our curriculum committee, then I met with them. So I feel like we have done a good job of vetting the survey and addressing as many of the concerns as were put out there. So I feel like there's enough information for you to take your vote and decide whether or not you want the students in the Wyndham Public Schools to take part in the survey.
I just want to add, which is one point of clarification, which isn't insubstantial, I think, is that of the board not only gave feedback, but Kami, as the president of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers, was, spoke about the survey too. So I think it was feedback from staff as well as board members.
That is correct. And I think the Wyndham Prevention Coalition did a great job of adjusting to that feedback and making the changes to make sure that folks were comfortable with providing the survey to our students. And again, the students and their families all have an opportunity to opt out. If they don't want to take the survey, they don't have to. It's just the board voting to provide the survey to them to make that decision.
So we're up for discussion now. And since we do have two people from the Wyndham Prevention Coalition here online with us, if board members have any questions, that would now would be the time. I see Katina had her hand up first, then you, Mary.
I just want to appreciate how responsive and flexible the staff of, well, it used to be called Pride, the prevention committee has been in accommodating to all the comments. I reviewed the survey again and it seemed like you were able to incorporate all the suggestions given, so thank you.
Thank you, Katina.
Who's speaking? Just make sure, oh, that's Mary.
Sorry, this is Mary, let me know. Yes, I'm sorry, I have a bit of a problem with my camera.
Oh, that's fine, Mary. We just want to make sure for the public record that people know who's speaking. So, thank you, Mary. Now, Mary, Katina, are you finished? Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that according to the board policy, the parents and students need to be informed at the beginning of the year about the fact, because these surveys, the survey deals with confidential topics and issues, as I mentioned last time, and as are listed in our policy. So, and they are supposed to be informed at the beginning of the school year and know the date of the survey, when it is going to occur. And they have, you know, obviously from now until then to review it. So that's just a reminder so that we follow our policy. And I would like to say that I would hope our high school students could be involved in making their own suggestions, including for whether they think, you know, there might be a different type of program that might deal with their concerns in a more active way from their perspective rather than a passive survey.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. I don't know whether Mary or Emily, you want to say anything?
Yes, absolutely, yes. So I think that part of the things we like to do is to engage with the student community. I know that in the past, we did talk to Pam and she suggested we use some of the athletes to do some kind of video just to engage with the student body. I think it's a pretty good idea. I'd hope that once we have the survey and have the results, we might be able to share with the student body. I know that they have a representative. They will have some kind of student groups that we could probably share some of the results that we got from the survey with. I don't know if Emily would want to say something else to.
Hi, thank you, Mary. This is Emily Rosenthal from the Wyndham Prevention Coalition. I would just also comment about that the Wyndham Prevention Coalition does have an active youth coalition that does meet and did also provide feedback on the youth survey. So we absolutely agree, the more actively we can engage with students, the better. That is a huge focus for us, so I totally agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary and Emily. Is there anybody else on the board who'd like to say anything about this during discussion? And then we'll take action later. Go ahead.
I would like to agree with Katina. I think the group has responded to our needs, our requests, and they've really whittled this survey down, they've reduced their grades. And we've debated this, I think, long enough. I think it certainly is time for us to go ahead and vote the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak during discussion?
Just saying we're right on time on voting on this since school starts tomorrow.
Right. Thanks, Katina. Which means we do need to be on top of doing what we need to do under our policy, that's all. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll be taking action pretty soon. Emily and Mary, if you want to stay online, you're welcome to. If you need to step off, we certainly understand. And you'll hear about the vote afterwards.
Thank you, thank you, Lynn.
So the next item for discussion is our board retreat. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this has been on our calendar since last fall, when we, you know, last November or December, when we finalized the calendar for this year. It does start on October 18th, which is a Friday. Excuse me, and then we also have a session on the 19th. We usually try in these retreats to deal with some basic things such as our own board self-evaluation, you know, which I'll be working with folks on to complete before that retreat so that we can talk about the results of that. And I know Dr. Youngberg has some things in mind that she'd like to suggest that we cover in the meeting. But I guess what I'd like to do is just quickly go around the table and have people share any thoughts that you have about things to cover besides Mark's request that we do lots of icebreaker activity, which he just loves. And I'd also like to hear from you about how open your schedule is that Friday beforehand so we can try to figure out what time that day, Friday, we can start the retreat. Now, we're missing a few board members, so I'll have to, I'll have to talk to them after this. But, Mark, I'm going to put you on the spot and start with you.
I can't think of anything. This is just to update, I'm not objecting to any of the ones that we brought up. As far as my availability on Friday, it depends on what we're having for lunch. I'm available most of, you know, that whole day, so.
You're open on Friday.
I'm retired now, so I can, it all depends on the lunch menu.
So you, you know, I don't want to press you too much, but is there anything around like finances or school, or the elementary school consolidation or whatever you're thinking we might want to set aside some time on that agenda for?
I would, I guess I would agree that we probably have a small amount of time for the consolidation so we can discuss.
An update.
Strategy to update, right?
Okay. Thanks, Paula?
I was thinking of two things in particular. One being having to do with the consolidation is perhaps some of our roles in getting out communications and setting up some type of timeline with regard to that. The other is having an opportunity to talk about some of our evaluation processes and how we want to get that kind of straightened out and everyone feeling comfortable with whatever tool we're going to be using in the future.
Thank you, Paula. How about your availability on that Friday?
I'm setting that day completely open, so.
Thank you. Mary?
I have limited availability because now I teach later in the day on Fridays.
Oh, okay. So when are you done with your classes on Fridays?
Two, I think it's 2:15.
Okay.
But then I have to get here, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree, we need to talk about doing evaluations. Also, maybe some area about the curriculum or, you know, supporting programs so that they actually stay in the district. And that students perhaps have a different process for certain things whereby students understand when they get involved, for example, in an apprentice program or certain types of job. I'm just saying some examples, not because of anything I know about these particular things. But it does seem that certain initiatives we've begun in the past don't seem to stay. And I would like to make sure the students have access and we keep track of things.
Katina?
Thank you. I agree with the self-evaluation and the, you know, updating the consolidation and how we're going to be out communicating with the community. Also, in terms of the transition for next year, which is the first step, I would appreciate to learn and see what, how we're going to maneuver all that transition and the relationship building so that students and families feel well about it. Regarding what Mary just said about curriculum, so I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but in terms of programs that stayed, the project-based learning, I would like to hear what's happening with that so we don't lose that angle as well as more art and music opportunities for students. So, and finally, I would like to see what we can do to create some sort of very big survey about Wyndham High School graduates and what they are about because we need to change the image, continue changing the image of Wyndham and so many good things Wyndham High School graduates are doing or have done. So I'm interested in, in, yeah, changing the image of our town and the school.
Okay, how about your availability on Friday?
Good.
All day or?
Yep.
Okay. Alicia?
I think one of the most important things is to know how the kids are in the school and how they are with the teachers and how they are, the support that they have, if they need any support. Especially, really especially for the special needs, the support that those kids need. So it's really important that the teachers know because when I was a preschool teacher, one year I got a girl that had Down syndrome and nobody told me that she had Down syndrome. And I was, after, they tell me late, like two months after she'd been in my classroom, I was like, why nobody told me before? Because those kids with any special needs, they need to have a lot of support from the teachers.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything else you'd like to have us consider putting on the agenda?
No. No.
Okay.
So the other thing is the 18th, I'd be available.
You're open on the 18th, okay. Thank you. And then, Ilda, I'm going to call on you.
Hello, everyone. So the 18th, I'm pretty flexible, so I'm free all day. And the, but the 18th, but the 19th Saturday, I am not sure. So you just have to let me know because I work Saturdays, so I'll have to work it out.
Well, we normally meet like from 8:30 or so in the morning till, you know, mid-afternoon. So you'll have to see what you can do to maybe free up your, free up your schedule that Friday, that Saturday, if possible. We can talk more about it, Ilda.
Okay. And the things that I'd like to see on the agenda are like what everybody said, the consolidation, curriculum, school curriculum, and school updates.
Okay. Thank you, Ilda.
You're welcome.
Now, now, I've been, Tracy and I have been writing these things down. There's a lot here. And as I said last year, we're going to try to figure out a cohesive agenda that makes sense that allows us to spend the right amount of time on things in the retreat. And there may be some things that have been mentioned here today that don't make it onto the retreat agenda, but then we figure out a way to have a workshop or dedicate some board time to. There may be things based on feedback that we get. I still have to hear from Brendan and Deanne Easey, but there may be things that, after I meet with Tracy, we decide we want to go deeper on and that weren't even mentioned today. That may be, you know, things that are coming up at the administrative level that it makes sense for the board to have a deeper understanding on. And don't forget that we have our attorney coming to meet with us that evening on Friday, the 18th. And that will be when we will be talking about attorney-client legal issues and things of that sort. And so far, only one board member has shared with me any things that they'd like to learn more about when we do meet with our attorney or delve into. So please let me know during the month of September if there are issues that you'd like our attorney to be prepared to discuss with us when we meet on Friday evening with her. Is there anything I'm missing, Tracy?
I got a quick question. So Friday, the 18th, what time would the retreat be?
We don't know, Ilda, I'm, I'm.
The evening.
I'm, well, she's meeting with us in the evening, so definitely Friday evening. We'll be having dinner or something and meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'm wondering if anybody? So I'm I'm wondering if anybody's gonna answer Mark's question about the lunch? I'm also curious about.
Well, Ilda, we may not be having lunch, because I already have one board member that can't start until after 3:00, so.
So Mark and I are not gonna come then.
Okay, well, and it's your, it, we'll make dinner worth it. Okay?
I didn't mean to cause troubles, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Well, nobody laughed, so when he said it, so.
Not encouraging Mark over here, you know.
Always good to have a second person to back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ilda. Um Tracy, is there anything I'm missing?
In terms of topics, I would, as I mentioned earlier, the needs assessment of our dual-language program, I think, is a good topic for you to be brought up to speed on, as well as the accountability index. By then, we should have hopefully some information that's been formally released from the state. Um actually, pieces of what we showed today was released from the state, so um definitely that. I I agree with a lot of things that you were mentioning, so I feel like we're on the same page for the kinds of things that will be helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate you all sharing your ideas. This is gonna help us put together something that will meet the needs of the board and the district. And also uh set us up for other topics that we have to explore further as we move through the rest of this year. Okay? Thank you. So there's nothing else under discussion. Um so we're on to action items. I would uh entertain a motion to take action on moving forward with the Wyndham Prevention Coalition survey.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina. Is there any discussion? Okay, um all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um so uh Emily and uh Mary, Mary's jumped off, but Emily and Mary, you're you're set to go forward and we can be working with the leadership team about making sure we get the word out and yes, I, things like that. I will be back in touch, so we can identify when that's going to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Emily. Thank you so much.
Okay, um now, um Albi, I'd like you to come up to the mic and I would entertain a motion to approve appointment of Executive Director of School Operations and Strategic Initiatives, um Mr. Albi Harris. Once we get the motion on the floor, then we can open it up, okay? So who would like to make that motion?
I make a motion.
By Mark?
Second.
Oh, Ilda, you did? I I, okay, Ilda. You seconded it then. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It is pretty exciting to have Mr. Utility Infielder here with us, taking on yet another role. Albi, is there anything you want to share with us?
I just want to thank everybody, board members, uh Dr. Youngberg, um people at Central Office, all the administrators, faculty, staff. I've had the privilege to be in the district for 14 years and a number of jobs and opportunities working across the board, number of schools, um particularly focused on the high school, a majority of my time here. It's also been my pleasure to work on the renovation project. We have an outstanding campus for our high school students and staff, W E C C students and staff and Central Office. It's it's a premier facility, providing tremendous educational opportunities and extracurricular opportunities for our students, so very, very proud of that. Looking forward for the great opportunities we have coming forward. There's gonna be a lot of work transitioning um our fifth graders to the middle school and then also working on our uh elementary school consolidation, so. And all the other projects, committees, groups. So I'm just happy to be here and continuing to support the community, but most of all, our students.
Thank you. Uh does anybody have any questions for Albi before we take a vote? I think we all know you, have known you for so long. You know, uh, okay, well, um then uh with, unless there's further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Uh thank you very much, Albi.
Thank you.
You have a lot of work ahead of you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate working with everybody. And at any time, any questions, just please let me know. Happy to meet, talk, discuss our community, our schools, our kids.
Thanks. Um and then the last action item tonight is action on the ECMC grant. Um there was a lot of information in our packet about that. I would entertain a motion to move forward on that.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Sorry, Ilda, I think you tried. Maybe I heard you and saw Alicia. Uh anyway. Uh any further discussion on this? Yes, Mary?
Yeah, um I was looking through this and it looks very um exciting. Uh who is the program administrator in the high school? Um I see the principal, I see Ms. Delab's name.
I believe it's Fatima Pearson is the administrator in charge, but I can verify that for you. When I read through the paperwork, it was my understanding that was Fatima, but yeah, it's pretty extensive. Um but we can get confirmation on that. Any further questions?
Rita just confirmed that I was correct. It is Fatima Pearson, Assistant Principal at Wyndham High School.
Any further questions? Paula?
I I was just a little confused. Maybe it was too much information. I don't know. This, this is not, this is new to us.
No, this is actually a program that's been in place in the district for several years, but this particular, the the money that you're approving to go into the fund is a a new check we've received.
Okay.
So we're just letting the board know we're receiving the donation, the the, yeah, the grant.
It's enough. I mean, it sounds like an incredible amount of work that's being done through all of this.
Yes, it does. It does require us to do some things behind the scenes. We just need you to say, yes, we can have the money for the, for the activity fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh Katina?
Would it benefit for a quick summary? I felt like Paula, like a little over, not a little, a lot overwhelmed by the information and maybe for the.
That is Fatima online or, and Rita's in the audience as well. Okay, they're trying to grab you some summary information.
Uh thank you.
Fatima, chime in if you have anything to share with us.
Hi, this is Fatima. So this um scholarship, it, they've donated $3,000 in the beginning. And every activity that we do, we send the money, that we send the invoices and they will replace that money. So we always have $3,000. This year, I guess they had more donors. They have opted to 6,000 for activities. And this is like taking students to college visits, doing the parent night, uh the FAFSA with the parents, uh students. And that's what that money is for. So it's, it's for the students that have applied to the scholarship, but then, say, we're going on a college vis- visits, so we take those, however many, we can only have up to 15. And then we we open it up to everyone that wants to go, that fits on the bus. So we could take 50, um 60 students.
And Fatima, we basically have to prove that we've done these things and then they're reimbursing us for the money that we've spent to do them, correct?
Correct. And then the kids get $6,000, $6,000 scholarship. By it, when they, when they finish these activities. The scholarship is guaranteed as long as they complete the activities over the, over two years, their junior and senior year.
Mark?
Yeah, just a quick question on the, on the scholarship. As I read this paperwork, only 10 students out of however 15 are gonna get the scholarships. It's, it's not every student participates in this.
So those are the students, so they have to apply and there's quite a bit of um work that they have to do. So some of the students, actually, we have to call the parents and like encourage them to do what, there are deadlines. But if they meet all of those, then they are guaranteed the $6,000. And as you can see, we um, we had more students apply and then they came in and said, no, I don't want to do this, $6,000 you're talking about. But yes, we have right now 10. They also have to um be in like um financial need, so ECMC actually approves the application once they get it. But once they, they accept the application and the student does the activities, it's guaranteed.
Well, I understand that, but it's guaranteed for 10 students, not guaranteed for all of the students. So if 15 students apply for the scholarship, only 10 of them are gonna get it, no matter.
No, no.
Well, this was says 10.
15. Oh, it's supposed to be up. It's supposed to be 15.
Okay, page 13 of 28 says, and I don't argue with it, but page 13, 20 says, like up to 10 ECSU Scholar Program Awardees for the class of 2025. Uh so that's where they're gonna give the money to.
Fatima, you believe the number's 15, correct?
Yeah, that's what he had told me. I mean, it's always 15. Um they, they were trying to opt the scholarship uh instead of 6,000, give 10,000. Um and maybe they're reducing that to 10. But we had one year that we have 13 students. They all got it.
Okay, well, let's get some clarification on that, but it, it, we could still move forward to approve this and just get like just say yes. We could say yes as a board, right? And then uh we can get the details about how many students will benefit from it after the fact. Does that sound okay with you, Fatima?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
One, one other question is, why is there a W9 form attached to this? Request for tax.
Yes, so this is, the last, last year, this past year, they decided that they were gonna send a $750 stipend to whoever was, to the administrator of it, of ECMC. My part, I, we have returned the check that they sent because they just did this, uh you know, just uh, they said it was like a token of appreciation. We have returned that because it wasn't voted and we didn't know anything about it uh before, like to be approved. But moving forward, I'm actually um wanting to open it up to someone that wants to run this program and then they would get this stipend from now on. But that's being decided with HR right now.
So we're trying to make sure it's done above board, right?
Yeah.
That we're crossing all the K's and doing all the I's.
Correct.
Anything else, Mark? Okay. Do people feel ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor to accept this uh funding, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:01 PM.
I move, we move.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.